I call this meeting of the City Commission for Thursday, July 1st, 2021 to order. Our first thing we are doing is the invocation and pledge. Tonight, we have Minister Chauncey Slater from Thankful Baptist Church to do the invocation, and after that, we will do the pledge. It will stay standing after the invocation for the pledge.
Amen, everyone. Let us go to the Lord in prayer, please. Father God, we thank you for another beautiful day that you have bestowed upon us, Lord. The rain is so much needed, Lord, and so is the sunshine, Lord. Right now, Lord, as we all come together as one unit, Lord, we pray right now that you continue to give our city leaders the wisdom and knowledge to lead us in the way in which you are leading them, Lord, and that we, as a community, that we come together and that we stand with them and that we help them to make the decision that is going to make a better community and make a wonderful impact, not just on Johnson City, not just on Washington County, but on the whole state of Tennessee and on the nation as well, Lord. We thank you for this opportunity, and we thank you for the breath of life that is in our lungs right now, Lord, and we go forward in power, and we just can't thank you enough, Lord. It's in your wonderful Son, Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Turn around and face the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Peterson?
Your first order of business is consideration of the minutes from your meeting held on Tuesday, June the 8th.
Do we have a motion?
I will move for approval.
Second. Now, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Jennings, would you read the roll, please?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Next order of business is to consider approval of the minutes from your meeting held on Thursday, June the 17th.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Ms. Jennings, would you read the roll?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
At this time, if we could ask Shane Malone and Chief Bell to come forward, please. We'd like to recognize Lieutenant Shane Malone for his special recognition from the VFW and the American Legion. Today is an honor and a privilege to recognize Lieutenant Shane Malone for his recent acknowledgements. Lieutenant Malone is a 15-year veteran of the Johnson City Fire Department with prior experience in the volunteer fire service. Each year, a member is nominated for the Regional Firefighter of the Year for the VFW post 2108 and the American Legion Kings Mountain post 24. This year, Lieutenant Malone was nominated for the honors by Deputy Fire Chief David Harrison, who noted Malone consistently goes above the call of duty for the department, customers, and the community at large. In addition to being a technically competent officer, Malone also has earned the respect of all department personnel. Lieutenant Malone has been awarded honors from both of these veteran service organizations, from the Regional Firefighter of the Year. Each organization has recognized him as the Regional, State of Tennessee, and Southeastern National Firefighter of the Year. These honors encompass an area that spans 12 southeastern states, and he was recently honored at two events in Franklin and Nashville for his service. Lieutenant Malone was selected for these honors for his work within the Johnson City Fire Department in our community. He is in charge of all Honor Guard operations and functions, which totaled more than 100 activities and events in this past year. Lieutenant Malone was also heavily involved in the restoration of the historic 1928 Seagrave ladder truck for the department. And heavily involved, I don't think adequately describes your involvement. This piece of equipment is a vital part of the history of the department and the city of Johnson City. I would ask you to please join me in congratulating Lieutenant Shane Malone on these prestigious awards that show his true dedication and commitment to the Johnson City Fire Department, the city of Johnson City, and most importantly, to the residents and visitors of our great community. Shane, congratulations. Good job.
We appreciate it. Dave, you want to talk? All right. Thank you for your service. We appreciate it.
Great job, and if you haven't seen Seagrave, take some time and go visit. It's an extraordinary piece of work to, no disrespect to the truck, but it grew from a rusted heap of bolts and connections to an unbelievably quality fire truck that this community will long cherish and enjoy. So, thanks again for all your work.
Mr. Peterson, if I could say something, please, because I spent a lot of time with the fire department during that process. They would call me and say, why don't you come over and see what we've done now? And it was just, to watch the process and the dedication that all our firefighters who worked on it had was just remarkable. But also Shane helped raise money to get it restored. It was a kind of public-private project and something that we can be extremely proud of. It was a discussion item last week about, well, would that look good over on Walnut Street in the, you know, as we renovate over there and kind of focus on the railroad and all the stuff that we have here? But thank you, Shane, and I know how much work and how much passion the whole department had in doing that project.
So, it's at Fire Station 1. If anyone would like to come and see it, it is at Fire Station 1. But also, last year, we decided with COVID, we got it out at Christmas and done a little small, Santa Claus showed up for the fire department and city employees, and we had like over 60 people stop driving up the road. But you wouldn't believe the interaction we get from that truck, people coming in, seeing it stop and talking about it, and the amazing piece. So, thank you all for letting us do it.
Where's Fire Station 1, just in case?
It's on Watauga Road.
Okay. On and out by the Pepsi Plant.
Yeah, right from the Pepsi Plant, Fairview Lake and Lakeview and all that, but it's right there, and we've got a nice new garage coming for it that the Professional Firefighters Association purchased. So, you can walk in, see it, and it's going to be environmentally controlled, and everybody can walk in, see it, and not touch it, and it'll be there for many years, and hopefully my grandkids and their kids will get to see it.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you all for letting us do it.
Thank you.
Next, we have a presentation of the proclamation recognizing Griffin Nichols as the Science Hill High School state runner-up in the boys' tennis singles for the 2021 season. Coach Lane? Griffin?
It's nice that our mayor decided not to be here tonight because I get to do all these for the Science Hill High School, which I'm also one of the team doctors for them. So, it's a privilege to get to do this tonight. So, let me read this for you. Whereas led by Coach Kelly Lane, Science Hill senior, Griffin Nichols finished his 2021 season as boys' tennis state runner-up, and whereas Griffin has been representing Science Hill admirably on the tennis courts throughout his high school career as the number one seed and voted all district by coaches every year with the tennis season since his freshman year, and whereas Griffin has led Science Hill to state or substate during each tennis season with increasing skill, competing in the region finals for doubles in 2018 and individual state tournament in singles in 2019, and culminating this year as the state runner-up in singles. And whereas Griffin's high school singles record is 40 and 8, his doubles record is 20 and 4, and his overall record is 60 and 12. And whereas alongside his outstanding athletic achievements, Griffin graduated from Science Hill with a 3.6 GPA and a 29 on his ACT, with plans to attend Knoxville, UT Knoxville in the fall. Now, therefore, I, Todd Fowler, for Joe Wise, Mayor of the City of Johnson City, do hereby congratulate Griffin Nichols on a remarkable season in high school tennis career during which he successfully and admirably represented our area on the stage. We are proud of you. Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. Thank you. Coach? Thank you. Thank you.
At this time, if we could ask Ally Knox and Leah McBride to come forth with Coach Williams for recognition as being the winners of the girls' tennis doubles state championship.
Come on over. Glad y'all are here tonight. So, whereas led by Coach Aaron Williams and Assistant Coach Anna Gherbasi, two athletes on the Science Hill girls' tennis team competed and won the state championship for girls' doubles during their 2021 season, and whereas this season was the first time that champions Ally Knox and Leah McBride played doubles tennis together, and whereas together they upset the district favorites to whom they had previously lost, winning the district tournament, qualifying for regionals, and beating their opponents for their tickets to state, and whereas Ally and Leah had a regular season record of 5 and 3, with a significant win over a non-conference division to double-A state contending school, and a postseason record of 5 and 0, and whereas Ally graduated from Science Hill High School this spring with a 4.0 GPA and will be attending Clemson University Honors College this fall, and whereas during her time with the Science Hill tennis team, Ally was named MVP of the team in 2018 and 2019, all-conference in 2019 and 2021, and was the region doubles finalist in 2019 and the region singles finalist in 2019, and whereas rising junior Leah missed her freshman tennis season due to COVID-19 pandemic, but was named MVP in all-conference in 2021 and has maintained a 4.0 GPA throughout her sophomore year. Whereas, now therefore, I, Todd Fowler, for Joe Wise, Mayor of Johnson City, do hereby congratulate Ally Knox and Leah McBride on a remarkable season during which they successfully and admirably represented our area on the state stage. We are proud of both of you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that very much. If you'd like to talk, if you'd like to say something.
I need to say something. Yeah.
Coach, you want to say? All right. Let me give it to everybody. I stand on the tennis court, especially.
Oh, thank you.
One for your assistant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item.
They might as well stay up. Girls' tennis is coming up next.
Yeah.
Come on back.
If we could ask the entire Science Hill High School girls' tennis team to come forward with Coach Williams to be recognized for their achievements in the 2021 season.
Whereas led by Coach Aaron Williams and Assistant Coach Anna Gherbasi, you may hear some of the same things again, but the Science Hill girls' tennis team achieved an incredible level of success during their 2021 season, finishing as second-time state champion with an overall regular season score of 12 and 2, and whereas the team's only two losses were to non-conference Division II double-A state contending schools, and whereas the girls' tennis team remains undefeated in the district, region, and substate dual-match play as well as state tournament, recording a 5-0 postseason record, and whereas tremendous sportsmanship, integrity, and character were demonstrated by Lexi Bryant, Sophie Elliott, Maddie Fuller, Madeline Jenkins, Haley Jones, Olivia Nicely, Ally Knox, Armita Cordamere, Ally Lamson, Leah McBride, Treshida Paul, Emily Peoples, Bravia Reddy, Josie Reed, and Savannah Wagner. Now therefore, I, Todd Fowler, for Joe Wise, Mayor of Johnson City, do hereby congratulate the 2021 Science Hill girls' high school tennis team on a remarkable season during which they successfully and admirably represented our area on the state stage. We are proud of each of you. Thanks. All right.
I'm Ally Knox. I'm Leah McBride. I'm Josie Reed. I'm Olivia Nicely. I'm Lexi Bryant. I'm Sophie Elliott. I'm Haley Jones. I'm Emily Peoples. I'm Erin Williams.
Congratulations to everybody. I don't get to do that very often. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank y'all. Mr. Peterson, big crew coming next.
Next, if we could ask the Science Hill High School baseball team to come forward recognizing a significant accomplishment by this group of young men this year. We'd like to recognize them with the proclamation.
Whereas led by Coach Ryan Edwards, Assistant Coaches Andy Wallen, Corey Moser, and Kevin Connor, and Manager Camden Copenhaver, the Science Hill Boys' baseball team achieved an incredible level of success during their 2021 season, finishing as state champions with an overall record of 34 and 9. And whereas the team won this year's conference championship, district championship, and region championship before heading to state, and whereas the team finished the season with a 14-game winning streak with a 9-5 victory over Hardin County on Friday, May 28th in the TWSAA Class 3A state championship, and whereas tremendous sportsmanship, integrity, and character were demonstrated by Kayden Toraka, Carter Skeen, Spencer Powell, Jackson Diamond, Josh McMacan, Gavin Briggs, Connor Hyatt, Evan King, Cole Torbett, Parker Trupier, Ashton Mott, Caleb Rogers, Owen Painter, Jack Torbett, Clayton Ball, Caleb McGryde, Aylan Roller, Braden Ramsey, Jake Bedard, Landon Smelser, Gavin Johnson, Nate Connor, Dustin Eaton, Ryan Smith, Jett Schwartz, and Jake McAllister. Now therefore, I, Todd Fowler, for Joe Wise, Mayor of Johnson City, do hereby congratulate the 2021 Science Hill High School baseball team on a remarkable season during which they successfully and admirably represented our area on the state stage. We are proud of each of you. Thanks. Congratulations.
They're scared of the microphone, so I'll just, no, I just want to say thank you to Johnson City really because, you know, all of our fundraising goes through Johnson City. I mean, the whole, we owe this a great debt to the town, and I'm just excited for these guys to represent the city in such a great way, and just very thankful. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
You sure you guys still want to say something? Come on.
Please do. Come on.
Good job, guys. Congratulations.
Good job.
Our next order of business is a presentation concerning the remote worker campaign. This is a quarterly update from Alicia Phelps, Mitch Miller, and Alicia Summers, so.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Commission, City staff. My name is Alicia Phelps. I'm with Northeast Tennessee Tourism Association, and we serve as the administrative clearinghouse for the Remote Work Recruitment Program, and I'm here to present some updates for just a few weeks that we've been running. Per our agreement, we'll be doing this quarterly, so I'll be seeing y'all quite a bit. And again, congratulations. I saw it here in your case on the Mask Up JC campaign. You all were a Pinnacle Award winner from Northeast Tennessee Tourism Association recently, so congrats on that. So, I'll just take a few minutes here to get started. Primarily, we're going to look at some advertising results and a good number of applicants that we've already received from this. Let's go all the way back to the beginning here. I do want to start with, this first slide here shows all the partners that we do have on board here, and we do hope that we'll have some additional ones from the area join as we move forward with this campaign, advertising to remote workers. I want to start off with a neat video that we've been using to showcase the area, and it's been working quite well. Hopefully, it will play, and if you haven't seen this, I hope you enjoy it as much as we have. So, we've got your attention with that. Now, let's move on to social media and some of the reach that we've had so far. Just from June the 9th through the 18th, we have already reached 132,000 people. 410 of those have actively clicked on those ads to be part of this campaign, and our top markets right now were Dallas, Chicago, San Francisco. Those were the markets that we sought after that would have the biggest return on your investment. Emerging markets, however, have been quite fun. Huge responses and applicants from Orlando, Nashville, Charlotte, and Atlanta, and from a tourism perspective, those are our people, so it makes sense that we see them also want to move here. We've had over 2,500 visits to that remote JohnsonCityTN.com website from June the 9th through the 18th, so that's absolutely phenomenal for a brand-new campaign off the bat. We also, through the Northeast Tennessee Economic Partnership, they've been working on social groups on the internet and social media sites, so with that, they've been able to reach in this short amount of time 107,000 people through 30 groups, and these groups, if you've ever looked on Facebook, they're moving to Johnson City, got to get out of California, getting to Tennessee, California to Tennessee, New York, you know, to the South. So, what they do is post, repost, they answer questions that folks may have, they identify new prospective groups that we look into, and then they collect data from these folks as well. So, they're really just kind of tapping in there, keeping the area on top of mind with these folks. The top markets with those social groups, California, Illinois, and New York. We were quite surprised by two things. Immediately off the bat, as you can see, the first day that we launched this campaign on the 9th of June, Ads of the World, which is a huge Twitter account that takes top advertising throughout the world and kind of shows others who's doing it best, they picked up our video and tweeted it. So, just with that, for $0, we were able to reach 203,000 people, so way to be an example once again. And then we also had Cedar Falls, Iowa contact us and say, hey, we saw what you all were doing, we want to do it. Who do we talk to? How can we, you know, how can we collaborate and figure out what works best for us? And we've had quite a few applicants from Iowa, so we set them up with the right person on our team to let them know how we did, but maybe not share all the details. So, but, you know, we had folks do the same with us, so we're happy to lead a helping hand there. And then Tennessee Tourism jumped on board. They have a campaign running, if you haven't seen it, called Come Work, Come Play in Tennessee. It has a hospitality and tourism-style focus, but again, they're jumping on the Work in Tennessee campaign too, so that shows us that we are in the right direction. It also helps just to get the word Tennessee out there with folks. So, let's talk about the applicants. As of June 21st, we have had 52 people already apply. That is insane. That is not even a month. So, we've been very busy filtering those eligible, 38. What makes them not eligible? Maybe they already moved here. We've had some that, hey, just moved here, and, you know, unfortunately, they were not eligible, or they lived within the radius, that would exclude them. So, I won't read off all these locations, but, you know, I think when I come here in quarter four, it's just going to be a page of all 50 states, maybe some international folks too. So, quite some surprises. I think our first application came from Oregon. You know, it's hard to explain. We do have stats now on, how did you hear about us? So, I'll be able to report that in a little more depth next time, but what industries are they in? 39% were in professional services. That could be anything from, you know, I work for a logistics company, a call center, to healthcare, they may work in billing, IT, 19% finance, 13% in insurance was 8%. So, that's kind of right on tap with what we were looking at when we started to look at recruiting folks. Selection process. You can see the committee members here. Those are the folks that are tasked with, you know, selecting the best applicant that will be a great fit for our community. They have monthly meetings, they'll review the applicants there, they've already received this flow of applicants from June, and so I think they're going to meet next week to start that process. Once they select the ones from that, we will then undergo a background screening, employment verification, and then as they move on to the next step, they'll be invited for a visit here to Johnson City, and so we'll reach out to additional partners to plan that. So, it's moving very quickly. The network. We've also, in this short amount of time, partnered with Spark Plaza Remote Work Opportunity there in downtown Johnson City on June the 7th, as we kind of launched this campaign, and we want to create a network, a welcoming community, as folks get acclimated into the area, and so, much to our surprise, with no advertising, just word of mouth, we already had 20 attendees of this, and as you can see, here's the group here, a lot of different ages, which is really surprising. The June meetup, I was surprised that they put a pin on different maps throughout the world. We had folks from all over the world. I think one was from Chile, and then Alaska, so they've already chosen to call this area home. So, it was, they felt, they were really excited to see this, they were really excited to be welcomed. So, we're going to do this quarterly too, and they're going to, you know, go on adventures, get to know each other, and help us out too on how we can best work with them. And that's all I have. Any questions?
The last slide with the group meetings, that's a part of one of your objectives in the program, is to get people connected so they don't feel lost when they come here, get them integrated into the community, and then try to make some recommendations on how they can even get more involved if they want to be on committees and...
Absolutely. Yeah, and that's a huge part, you know, we don't want folks to just come here, we want them to be part of the community, we want them to build Northeast Tennessee, we want them to diversify the area, and we want them to grow the area. So, we found through this that a lot of them are self-starter entrepreneurs, or maybe their partner also had their own business, so I think it lends hand to a lot of different industries as we look at it, and it was great, you know, some of them, I've been a remote worker since, you know, 98, you know, since the internet first became a reality in the business world, so it was really eye-opening to see these folks from all walks of life be here, and they loved it. And a lot of them had already, they had grown up here, maybe they went to college here, they left, and they couldn't wait to get back. That's been a lot of the applicants as well.
So, the new ones, why did they come, and how did they hear about Johnson City?
Of these folks, they had either primarily visited here on vacation, they had family ties here, or, like I said, they went to school here, moved away, had to experience that, and then they decided where the good life was.
Vice Mayor, may I ask a question?
You may.
Thank you for that wonderful presentation. If you don't care, could you walk us briefly as to what happens after an applicant is approved to them receiving the benefits? I think it's, what, $5,000 up to? Can you talk about that for the sake of our citizens who may want to know why they're not getting the $5,000 too?
Absolutely. Yeah, it's very important to know that these folks... Yeah, it's very important to know that these folks, the minimum income to be part of this program is $50,000. And so you may receive an incentive of 2,500 to 5,000 based on your income. And, you know, while that's not really a lot of money when it comes to getting folks here, it gets their attention. We've seen that with a lot of, well, pretty much all campaigns. They do that to get the attention, and it does help them with the move here. So we're not handing them money, putting them money in their pockets when they immediately move here. That's very important to know. I think per the information that they will, and the contract that they receive, they will receive it in increments while they have to be here at least one year. So we will continue to follow up with them throughout the process. And then that way, we're not just handing out cash to people, we're making an investment in the community that way, and we hope they will as well.
So what is the cap on that, again? How many?
Yeah, so it's of the dollar amount.
Dollar amount per person and the pool of money that, you just can't give to everybody that moves here.
No, no. And Alicia Summers that we were just talking outside, she's, her and Mitch have the pleasure of serving on that selection committee. So we were chatting about the applicant process and how many we are accepting. So 5,000 is the max that one person can receive. You cannot double up, you cannot have two people from the same household doing this. And in terms of the selection process, you know, many communities are looking at, we'd be happy with 10 in two years. We think a lot larger. We don't expect to see 100. So I think a good estimate would be anywhere between 10 to 20 in the first probably year and a half of this program, and that way we'll start to see a result. And, you know, that way we're also not, you know, we keep an eye on the budget, and we're also not just handing out the money. Hopefully, that answers your question?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are they going to be required to come to meetings like this meeting once they've come to Johnson City? Is that one of their requirements?
Absolutely. Yeah, and they'll, you know, we'll get them here on their, we call it familiarization, fam tour as well, and several of the applicants that already expressed, I'm coming to visit anyway. And that way, we'll really start to open our eyes as to what kind of fit they would be for our community as well. So it will be very important that they are an active member of our community, and they don't just sit on the wayside, because again, we are making an investment in the future of the area, not just getting people to move here.
I don't think our plan was to have them come here for a year and get their money and then go somewhere else.
Absolutely not.
I have one more question. Are you guys doing background checks, like criminal background checks and things like that? Pedophiles or any?
Absolutely.
Just trying to keep our community safe. I mean, we welcome all people, but just are we investing in those who are safe for Johnson City?
Absolutely. As administrative clearinghouse for this program, Northeast Tennessee Tourism will be doing the background checks for these folks, and will actually be doing that in the first initial process. That way, we don't invest any additional time on them if they're not going to be a good fit. So we will be running a very extensive background check, probably this month, actually, as the committee comes back with. I think there were, we, through the 50 applicants, they're looking to have maybe 15 to 20 that they would like to see move forward.
Would you consider partnering with our police department or investigate?
Absolutely. I know that conversation is taking place some, so I'm not sure where we are exactly on that. I don't know what the regulations and liability would be for the police department, but that's definitely an option. I always try to keep it local in anything we do, so they would be a good resource for that, and we'll check into that for sure.
Thank you. That explains a lot. We appreciate it, and I'm excited about your response so far, and especially the free advertising we got. So it's wonderful.
Yeah, and as tourism picks up, you know, we see this all pick up. So again, thank you all for your leadership and your investment in the region with this program.
Thank you. Your next order of business is consideration of a beer license application for Tennessee Hills Brewing LLC doing business as Tennessee Hills Brew Stillery located at 458 West Walnut Street. This is a request for a Class 5 Manufacturer Retail License. The business is located in an appropriately zoned property. We have all the submissions with the exception of the approval of the Washington County Health Department, and the recommendation is for conditional approval pending the receipt of that information from the Health Department.
We see, we appreciate you coming back again tonight, so thank you for being here. Have you read the, actually first, your name and address?
Stephen Callahan at 1002 Mill Drive, Jonesboro, Tennessee.
Have you read the rules and regulations for the sale of beer in the city of Johnson City?
Yes, sir.
Do you agree to abide with those?
100%.
Thank you. All right.
I've moved to approve the requested beer license contingent upon the successful completion of the Health Department inspection.
We have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a second? Ms. Jennings, would you read the role?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
You want to tell us about your place again?
He's got a stack of papers. He's going to go through all those.
This is equipment for the big one. When we come back again, I don't know when that's going to be, but sooner or later, we're coming back. We spent, I think, two hours signing these POs for equipment for the Walnut Street project, and I wanted him to see how thick the stack was, because he didn't sit in that room and sign them. So I brought them with me to show them. He was like, oh. No, thank you for coming by and checking out the place today just to see what it might all look like. It looks better when I stopped by on my way here, and I think the Health Department emailed us to contact them about a week before we were ready to open, which we intend to be the 17th, and we'll make sure that goes well and get that in place.
Get the call tomorrow.
And looking forward to having a lot of fun making that happen and a few other things too. But I was really intrigued, is that remote working?
Do they have to work remotely, or can they come here and get a job?
We're trying to hire a distillery.
I am still impressed with the Brew Stillery. I mean, that's still such a great name. All right, thank you all.
Thank you all so much.
Next order of business is approval of consent agenda.
All right, I'm going to start with my left. Do we have anything to pull?
6.2.
6.2?
I'm going to pull 6.1, just as an overview of that, what's going on.
All right. Commissioner? Those two?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
All right, I don't have anything else, so that was 6.1. 1.1 was mine. So Mr. Peterson, I guess we'll start in order.
Okay. 6.1.1 is a support agreement between TBA Bright Ridge and the city of Johnson City for a smart city project. TBA has grant monies available, and this will be 100% funded by the TBA. And what this is, is a demonstration project that would allow TBA to gather data from our implementation of certain smart city products, so they can make a determination as to the value of that type of deployment of smart city instruments to the TBA and to the power industry. What we're looking at is to put in a special, if you will, utility pole that would have, obviously, pedestrian and street lighting, but could also accommodate cameras, it could accommodate microphones, they can accommodate speakers to broadcast music. You could do counters that would count pedestrian traffic that passes by. It will allow you to implement smart parking to where you could put in a board that would notify people of the number of available parking spots and those types of things. So we're evaluating all of the potential equipment that's available and then trying to determine what would work best for us to install downtown and to evaluate that equipment, the data we get, to see what portion of that or all of those different things that we may utilize would be worthy of continuing implementing in the future.
Where's that likely to go? If y'all kind of narrowed down an area that might be a good?
Parking lots, Main Street, Market Street, Buffalo, Commerce, Rome Street.
This isn't like the Alexa smart light bulbs you can put in that you tell them to dim and change colors and do all those kinds of things.
Pretty much. I mean, there's, a piece of this technology is used in large cities. It's actually a gunshot detection unit to where it can detect the gunshot and notify you the appropriate authorities that there's been a gunshot quicker than somebody can call 911. Of course, you've got cameras, and you could use speakers to broadcast public messages or to play music, and a variety of different things you could do with it.
When might that project start installation?
It's got to be finished by October 1st. Am I remembering that right, Phil? Because TBA was saying they needed to spend that money this fiscal year, which ends September 30, so.
December 31st, 2022 is what it says.
Okay.
So next year, by the end of next year.
By the end of the year, next calendar year. Okay, thank you.
Be nice to go ahead and get some in. I'll put a plug in for getting some of those polls in and around Founder's Park and King Common, so we can play music for the Christmas tree line this next year.
Yeah, that'd be pretty cool.
Yeah.
That's a great project. Thank you.
Yes. The next item is 6.2.1, which is to pay the fees for the AP exams for the 2020-21 school year that just completed.
I just wanted to highlight this, because I know we have, you know, many constituents and citizens that needle us on the input but don't necessarily always recognize the output. They're always focusing on what we're spending but not recognizing what that return is. And when I was on the school board is when we made this request to the city commission. And, you know, it's a little bit more than just, you know, paying for the AP tests for the students, but at that time, we phased out the IB program so that we could focus more solidly on one advanced program. And Dr. Barnett, you know, sent me some information on where we were and where we are and what has produced. And so, you know, I mean, this $110,000 a year investment in order to allow more students access to testing has given more interest within Science Hill. I think they've added since 2018, 15 additional AP courses. They've added the Capstone Program. They've gone from 743 students participating in AP to 1,0365, and that's even including during COVID, so nearly doubled the number of participants. And, you know, I guess my thought is, I don't know, how much does a college course class cost these days? A couple thousand?
A lot.
So, and one of the other things I'd like to recognize is that our paths are getting a three or better on an AP course, our students are doing that at a higher rate than, not just at the state level, but the national level. And with that, with that three or better, you can club out of college classes. And so when we look at that investment of $110,000, that investment creates a savings to our taxpayers, their parents, as they pay for college. And, you know, if it's 2,000 a class, that equates to about $2 million in savings in college expense. So I just wanted to highlight that.
Well, I think one of the other real values of this is that not all families can afford, you know, the fees, taking the AP tests and depending on how many times they might take it. And so if they haven't seen an increase in students enrolling in here, it may have just taken one of the stumbling blocks off the table for them.
I was impressed with the number, over 1,100 examinations that they gave for AP classes, so that's pretty impressive for one student.
And by the way, to the public, those fees go to the company, you know? It doesn't go internally. The school doesn't charge to administer those tests. It goes to the company who provides all the materials for the AP courses.
Yeah, right.
Goes out of the area.
Anything else? Do we have a motion for the agenda?
I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Jennings, can you call the roll?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Next is ordinance number 4777-21. An ordinance to amend the zoning map, the city of Johnson City, Tennessee, being part of the appendix to ordinance number 1519, entitled an ordinance to adopt a code of laws and ordinances for the city of Johnson City, Tennessee, and to repeal all laws and ordinances in conflict therewith and amends itary thereof by changing from R2 Low Density Residential Zoning to R2C Low Density Residential Zoning. Certain property located at 203 Mayflower Road is ready for your consideration on first reading.
Greetings. Thank you.
Good evening. Just kind of want to point out where this property is on Mayflower Road, and I may switch to Mayfield, because I do like ice cream. So, but it's located right there at Rocky Top, right by I-26, as you're driving out of town. And this is the property that they're talking about. Just to kind of give you an overview of what the zoning is around that, predominantly it's R2 with a church that is right here and some apartments across the way. And this is zoned I-1. What they would like to do is to create five lots. They want to keep the existing house to do that. And in order to keep the existing house, we needed to be a little more creative when it came to setbacks, which is why they're asking for R2C. They could still get five lots if they took down the house, so density would be about the same, but it's how you're able to create and do those lots. I don't really know how that they will treat the existing house, fronting now the rears, but that is a question you might want to ask the applicant during the second reading. Future land use is still residential. This would keep in line with that. And just if you haven't had a chance to drive out that way, just to show you what it looks like, there was a neighborhood meeting. There was no one in attendance for the neighborhood meeting. Staff recommends approval, and a planning commission has recommended approval. There ends my presentation.
Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, being on the planning commission and did vote for it during that review, and that is, by the way, if you haven't been out there, it's close to the Mormon church.
Yes, it's the Mormon church.
That's the church right next door.
Well, Latter Day Saints, I think, something like that.
Right. So I will move for approval for a second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Next is ordinance 4778-21. An ordinance to amend the zoning map, the city of Johnson City, Tennessee, being part of the appendix to ordinance number 1519, entitled an ordinance to adopt a code of laws and ordinances for the city of Johnson City, Tennessee, and to repeal all laws and ordinances in conflict therewith and amends itary thereof by changing from B4 Planned Business Zoning to R01 High Density Residential Professional Office Zoning. Certain property located at 207 East Mount Castle Drive.
This property is the Econo Lodge, if you need a point of reference. It's on Mount Castle, just south of the Red Roof Inn, and this would be the target over here. What they're looking to do is to take the Econo Lodge and take the rooms, and then create, basically, take down the wall, like take down a middle wall, and create one-bedroom apartments. There may be some two-bedroom, just depending on layout or buyer, and they have specified that, and they've redone their site plan, which is one of the things we asked for to clarify that. What they would like to do is to basically maintain the density of R01. So if there were different ways, really what they've asked for is about 22 units per acre. If they reduced the bedrooms, that would still reduce their density, but the R01 for this type of site would allow 35 units up to that. They are not proposing to change the building footprint, but do make modifications to update the outside, like eliminate doors, update the facade, that kind of thing.
You said buyers. Are they going to sell them?
That's kind of what it sounded like from the planning commission.
Not necessarily apartments.
Yeah, so, well, no, no, no. Sorry, if they sold it to someone who developed it. So one of the other things from the planning commission was they were not showing a sidewalk on the site plan. They are showing that sidewalk now, big and red. on the site plan. They are showing that sidewalk now, big and red. And just to give you an idea, this is about to complete a block, which is a big deal. Sorry, I get a little excited. It's a big deal because with kind of going away from transient residents to residents, like they're coming and living here, they'll be able to walk to a lot of different things within that block. There's public transportation here. So this is what we would consider an adaptive reuse. So taking something and creating kind of a different way of looking at it. It is business in the future land use plan. Staff does not feel that moving to residential would be a problem. I would like to call this horizontal mixing versus vertical mixing. Just to give you an idea, I mean, I think we all know what this looks like. But the guiding policies that would support this is, from the strategic plan, the quality of place, so encouraging a mixture of housing options. From the bridge plan, there are policies here listed about infill and multifamily density, being located next to transit, as well as encouraging residents to be physically active. And I can't think of a better one than if you took out a car trip to be able to walk over to Target. The neighborhood meeting was held on June 2nd. There was no public in attendance. Staff recommends approval. The planning commission recommended approval with conditions, but they have met the conditions.
So what, how many hotel rooms are there right now? 130-some?
No, that just escaped my head. So it would be 100, about 64, 132.
Yeah, okay. And they're going to now reduce it, building the apartments out to?
64. But if they did two bedrooms, that would further reduce it. So it might come down.
These will be, I'm sorry, last question. These will be, what they were talking about is competitive rent prices.
Yes, they were talking about market, at the planning commission, they presented that it would be market rent.
Do you know if they're going to have the doors on the back side in the L and all the windows on the back? Is that where they're getting rid of the doors or there's going to be entrances on both sides? Or have you seen?
I have not seen that. So I would, that would be a great question for the applicant at the?
Okay, next meeting.
At the next meeting.
Anything else? Move approval? We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Jennings, would you read the roll?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Next ordinance is 4779-21, an ordinance to amend the zoning map of the city of Johnson City, Tennessee, being part of the appendix to ordinance number 1519, entitled an ordinance to adopt a code of laws and ordinances for the city of Johnson City, Tennessee, and to repeal all laws and ordinances in conflict therewith and amendatory thereof by changing from R2 low-density residential zoning to A1 agricultural zoning. Certain property located at 519 Claude Simmons Road is ready for your consideration on first reading.
Whitney?
So this property would like to go back a little bit and kind of return to agriculture. There will be one house on the site with most likely a stable and supporting barns. In the A1, these are the permitted and uses by exception. At the second meeting, I will provide this to you. This is very hard to read, and I forgot to print this slide off. But I'll provide that to you in paper so that you can read that a little bit better. But if you had a chance in the ordinance or in the packet. It is located adjacent to county-owned or county-zoned land and has recently been annexed into the city. You may have recalled that this was called Bent Oaks at one point in time. And this just to let you know, like what the county zoning is around it, it is agricultural around it. The Sturgles have started a house. They have a house under permit. And what they would like to do is really just use the land as a working farm. At the planning commission meeting, they did talk about how they have purchased additional land. So this will be a much larger kind of farm area. But it's residential in the future land use map. And this is just some pictures going up through there. The neighborhood meeting did have, there were some residents who came to the neighborhood meeting. They had some questions about what, you know, what the Sturgles were going to do on the property. They talked about how it already has been cleaned up and then what kinds of buildings. There's one resident that is against the proposal. I'm not sure if he's reached out yet, but is concerned about noxious uses that are associated with any type of agriculture use. Staff recommends approval. It's in, it's adjacent, almost adjacent to our urban service area. So this is probably a good way of kind of maintaining some of that farmland that is known and kind of coming in from the county to the city. And there are bridge plan policies that's there. And the planning commission recommended approval. The applicant requests that the second reading be held on the August 5th meeting. They will not be in town. And if that needs to be in part of your motion, I just wanted to make that known.
I believe Dr. Sturgill came to us when he wanted to be in the city because he wanted his kids to go to city schools, but he still wanted to have horses and a farm in the city. And he's right on the edge, county and city. So I remember him coming to us before. So I'm glad to see this coming back.
Yes, sir.
Do I hear?
I'll make a motion to approve. And if we need to include moving public hearing to August 5th into that, I'll add that as well.
Okay.
Second.
Do we have any further discussion? Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Next is ordinance number 4780-21, an ordinance to amend Article II definitions, Article IV, Section 4.13 accessory uses, Article VI, use requirements by district, and Article XI, parking regulations in the city of Johnson City zoning ordinance as it relates to substance abuse treatment facilities or medication-assisted treatment, is ready for your consideration on first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson, Mayor Commissioners. This reason why I've got the website up here for Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services is because I want to make reference to a particular division in this department, and that is Medication-Assisted Treatment, or MAT. And so that's really entirely what this text amendment is about. You may recall, right about the time that actually that I arrived in 2018, Eric Haren, who was the contracted counsel for the city at the time, approached me right after I began and said, "We need to begin working on a text amendment for substance abuse treatment facilities because we have concerns about the way that our current code is adopted may violate ADA law, may create a problem for us from a legal perspective." And the reason why is because our process that's in the code today requires that these facilities go through an extra step that another medical clinic or just a conventional doctor's office would not have to do. And that is, in specific zones, they would have to go through and get a special exception from the BZA. And not only go and obtain the special exception, but there are a number of criteria specified before the SE can be granted. It's that language, that process, that extra step that's not required for a conventional medical office that creates the problem. So here we are today. We actually brought this in front of the planning commission in 2019 before the pandemic. There were some questions and concerns about how the text was drafted at the time, definitions that were being proposed. So we went back, amended all this. Since then, as you know, Ms. Sandos has come on board, and she's been very helpful in the rewrite of this ordinance. And so what we have in front of you is an ordinance that repeals that language that is contradictory or potentially litigious, repealing that special exception process, those extra steps and conditions, and then also repealing our current definition of substance abuse treatment and aligning our new definition with the state definitions of medication-assisted treatment. And as you can see here, the state breaks MAT down into three different areas. I never get that word right, so I'm just going to go ahead and say this is, the first section is subutex and suboxone. And our proposed ordinance borrows from those definitions. And then methadone and naltrexone. There was some question as we were going through the planning commission about new rules under the state, MAT guidelines that allow suboxone facilities to not only write prescriptions like they have done historically, but to potentially also dispense on site. So we went back after the planning commission deferred that item, actually made contact with the state, with Dr. Gemm, who is one of the chief physicians and pharmacist who works directly with this department. And he indicated that, yes, there are two different rules, one for prescribing, one for dispensing, but that no one in the state at this time is dispensing from a suboxone clinic. They are all prescribing based on, he said, based on the licensure. And so he did indicate, though, that the OBOT, or the office-based opioid treatment facility, which is the conventional medical clinic, whether it be a prescription or whether it be dispensed, should still be considered just a conventional medical office. And so that would remedy any concerns from an ADA perspective. So the ordinance before you now has been recommended for approval by the planning commission, and we bring it to you as such.
I may need you to look into this because there is a suboxone clinic next door to my clinic that just put in a pharmacy that is now on the back side. So you get your prescription in the front and you drive around to the back and get distributed that medication in the same facility, just a back door into the same building. So.
I'll be glad to contact the state, and that would be state enforcement. That would not be our office, but.
Thinking that didn't sound correct because, well, it may be correct. It just may not be being enforced in my neighborhood of my office there. So.
Mr. Peterson, because we've dealt with this for a long time, is there more oversight, supervision, regulation from Nashville over suboxone clinics now compared to what they were a number of years ago?
I can't answer that question. I.
And there's a question about how far you have to be away from schools and churches and those kind of things, too, that I don't think has ever been written by the state because that's another with some of the facilities right around me that's right across the street from a church and right down the street from children's area, school, such.
And I haven't looked at the regulations that the state have promulgated at all. Basically, what this ordinance does is to get us in compliance with state and federal regulations. And to summarize it in very general terms, we can't regulate these types of facilities any more than we can your office or any other doctor's office. It really is dependent on the state to regulate location, hours, dispensing practices, and those types of things. But we'd be glad to contact the state and follow up on those questions.
What is allowed and what is not allowed with that going on? That would be nice to know.
Yeah, this would have been good to work with in a workshop session so that we could really, yeah, because we.
But we've got two more readings to maybe get some answers to that.
Certainly. Well, have you answered?
This is really just to deal with the ADA aspect of our.
More, this is to ensure that we are not discriminating against these facilities in any manners, and the ADA would be a part of potential discriminatory action against these type of facilities.
Right. Anything else?
In short, as the city manager noted, no local government can regulate these any different than, as he noted, than a conventional medical clinic. Because it is just another type of treatment, just similar to the type of treatment that Dr. Fowler offers. This is another type of treatment. And so that's why they're called OBOTs, or office-based opioid treatments.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hunter. Do I hear?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Murphy. Any other discussion? Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
So I guess we could get some questions that we might have.
Answered before, the third reading especially.
Well, and I'm sure you probably already have the answers. I mean, I think the planning commission's been looking at this for a year and a half or longer. So, yeah, it'd be great to have it on the public media.
You may bring us those answers.
The first time I saw it was at the last meeting, so I don't know.
So if you've got specific questions, please feel free to send those to me. I'll be glad to address them.
Sure. Thank you.
Next order of business is ordinance number 4760-20, an ordinance to revise, update, and add new sections to the Code of the City of Johnson City regarding noise by amending Title 11, Chapter 5 of the Code of the City of Johnson City, Tennessee, and repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, is ready for your consideration on second reading.
Good afternoon. What we have for you is a revision to the noise ordinance. Major Howe was here at our first reading, and he will return for the second, or for the third hearing. We also will have public hearing on this ordinance change in the third reading. In the currently existing noise ordinance, there are seven sections. What you have before you for consideration on second reading includes 13 sections. And I'll briefly go through what those revisions include. There are added definitions, so it expands on 501. 502 is changed to include administration enforcement. This moves that under police and codes enforcement. Codes enforcement is in addition to this. We include a sound measurement procedure, meaning how you actually utilize the devices to measure the sounds, to measure the noises. We add permitted sound levels. These are the maximum levels regardless of any location. And then we've got three sections added that specifically are for construction activities, power tools and equipment, and motor vehicles. We also include a voice-sound amplification prohibition, which I'll talk to you momentarily about. We expand on the exceptions, which currently exist in the current ordinance. We include investigations in the right-of-way entry, which is the enforcement piece of this with the codes enforcement and police for measuring and entering to be able to measure those offending noises. And we include a limitation of remedy. So on the voice amplification devices and the prohibition of those, we looked at some of our other comparable-sized cities across the state of Tennessee that have the same type of amplification prohibition in place. Specifically, we looked at Knoxville, Franklin, and Murphysboro. Whenever we are utilizing or proposing ordinance changes of this nature, as I'd stated in the first hearing, we have certain legal aspects that we have to look at. And so that's what we've done in this case as well. We have to look at the governmental interest, which in this case, it's offending noises. We have to look at whether we are regulating that by substantially related means that's related to those offending noises or the unreasonable noises. And we have to use the least restrictive means necessary. So where this is primarily applicable is with your voice-sound amplification. The exceptions that we've included are to address how to make this the least restrictive implication or implication possible. And that's why we have a very exhaustive list of the exceptions so that we can be sufficiently definitive to secure against any arbitrary Are there any questions with regard to the proposed revisions that you have before you?
Move approval? I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Public hearing's next.
Yes, Commissioner.
If nothing else, Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Next is ordinance number 4772-21, an ordinance to revise the code of the city of Johnson City to identify city-owned property that allows sale and consumption of beer, to remove Johnson City Development Authority as scheduling agent, to clarify proceed designation for temporary occasion beer license, and identify distance requirements for temporary occasion beer license during a special event. beer license during a special event by amending Title 8, Chapters 1 and 2 of the Code of the City of Johnson City, Tennessee, and repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, is ready for your consideration on second reading.
We have a series of revisions, so these hit in some different sections of Title 8, and they're each, they're not related specifically to each other, so we'll go through them individually. The identifying of city-owned property, what we've done, there's two purposes to the revisions that you have before you. One is to include Freedom Hall, which would be the civic center. It's not specifically called out as Freedom Hall because potentially the name could change sometime in the future, and we don't want to have to come back each time that potentially there is name change. But as you're aware, there has been a replating of Freedom Hall, so it can have beer sales on the property if approved by the commission as an identified parcel by city-owned property to allow for that type of sale and consumption. Also within that, we've removed the names of TDA Credit Union and Pine Oaks for similar reasons that in the event the names change, we can, we don't have to come back before for three readings each time there is a subsequent name change. The removal of the Johnson City Development Authority as the scheduling agent was done because this commission has previously terminated the agreement between the JCDAs as the special events coordinator essentially. As you're aware, there now is a specific position within the city. Andy Howser now has that title, and so that's the transition to be consistent with the position that now handles those through the city. The clarification of the proceed designation on the temporary occasion beer license, that is to provide consistency between what our ordinance states and what the applications require, as well as the intent that has always been in existence between those special events. What we require is that at least some portion of the proceeds from these special events which are being, which are utilizing the city-owned property go to a bona fide charitable nonprofit organization. There's not an audit that's conducted, so it just must be a proceed or a portion of those proceeds. And then the identifying the distance requirements for the temporary occasion beer licenses during special events, that also is done in an effort to provide consistency with other portions of Title 8. For on-premise consumption, we require 100-foot site distance from any church, religious establishment, school, daycare, playground. To provide consistency on the special events where we're still allowing the consumption of beer, we want to keep that same site distance from those same properties and same types of organizations.
Does that create any issue with Freedom Hall or the building currently known as Freedom Hall?
It does not. So the state requires that if you're, if you want to remove the ambiguity on how you measure your distances, you have to spell it out in your local ordinances. Which you'll recall, a couple months ago, we did that on our on-premise. So, and Freedom Hall would be an on-premise if it was to be licensed. But for the special events, it keeps that exact same distance language of how it's measured. So it's measured from the point of sale, because typically with a special event, you've got a tent. You don't have a physical structure. So it's from the point of sale wherever that probably the tent is located, and then you measure in a straight line. If it's a playground, it's just the nearest boundary point. If it's to a church, or a school, or a daycare, you measure to the front door. So it's a straight line as the crow flies.
Ready for motion?
I am.
I will move for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Ordinance number 4776-21, an ordinance to revise the Code of the City of Johnson City to prohibit the use of tobacco products on city-owned property by amending Title 11, Chapter 1 of the Code of the City of Johnson City, Tennessee, and repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, ready for your consideration on second reading.
And effective as of today was a Senate Bill 28 through the Tennessee Legislature that granted municipalities the authority to pass an ordinance prohibiting the use of these products on any public property, public, oh, sorry, on the grounds of any public property, public park, public playground, public greenway, or any public property that's accessible by youth. Youth is defined as anyone...
Sounds like good timing.
Yes. So it became effective today. As you know, this is second reading, which means ours is not effective on July 1. If passed, it would be effective July 15th if it was passed on third reading, which would be within the parameters of what the state has given the authority for our municipality to approve.
Move for approval.
I wanted to make that motion.
I had to beat you to it.
Really big.
Didn't want this for a long time.
So let me say it real loud. I will second that motion.
I did have a question, just out of curiosity. What do you know of any other municipalities that have already taken these steps in the state, or?
I'm not aware of, I haven't tracked any of our others since it's, I'm not sure if any have taken that initial step like we did to have an advance, to be able to have it passed as quick as we are moving.
So we have policy now that's really not real enforceable, but this gives us statutorily now the ability to enforce that.
Yes, ma'am. And in response to Commissioner Hunter, Kingsport has prohibited tobacco products at several of their facilities.
This includes vaping, too, correct?
Yes.
Includes vaping.
Vaping is one of the additional things that we have the authority to do. Now, why this is unique for us and the authority that the state's granted is that, as you know, King Commons and Founder's Park aren't part of our parks. They're actually what is defined by the state and by our ordinance as a greenway. Previously, we did not have ordinances on those because we had our park policies. So this actually allows an ordinance that does have a citation that can be attached to it if you violate.
We have a motion and a very large second. Any other discussion? Ms. Jennings, call the row.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Ordinance 4771-21, an ordinance to amend the zoning map of the City of Johnson City, Tennessee, being part of the appendix ordinance number 1519, entitled an ordinance to adopt the code of laws and ordinances for the City of Johnson City, Tennessee, and to repeal all laws and ordinances in conflict therewith and aminitory thereof by changing from I-2 heavy industrial zoning and R-4 medium density residential zoning to R-2 low-density residential zoning, B-3 supporting central business district zoning, and MX-1 mixed-use neighborhood zoning the following properties in the Mountain Home neighborhood. 207 Highland Avenue from R-4 to R-2, 201 Highland Avenue, 324 and 340 South Commerce from I-2 to R-2, 917 West Watauga from I-2 to B-3, 905 West Watauga, 312 and 316 South Commerce from I-2 to MX-1, 803 West Watauga from R-4 to MX-1, 222 and 224 Highland from R-4 to MX-1, and a portion of CCNO Railway from I-2 to B-3 and R-2 is ready for your consideration on third and final reading.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Commissioners, I want to first add that you may recall from second reading that Lorraine Brown came and spoke and had a packet of information that she asked that be shared. All of that information was scanned and provided to you as part of your backups. I just want to make sure, or just stated on the record that that was provided to you. Also, in not only hearing her comments and having spoken to Ms. Brown several times over the last months, and then reading through her packet, I've amended my presentation just a hair to try to respond to some of the things that she was asking about. One of the questions was, you know, why we've not done a robust traffic study or parking study in the area. And I've already responded to that, but I wanted to at least show you that we went through and identified some key points. And so hopefully this addresses some of her concerns and maybe helps you in this final decision. Quickly, we've already been through the history of the neighborhood, where our focus is today. Back in May, it was reduced from 20 down to 11 sites, and then the current version you have in front of you includes just 10 sites. So what I wanted to do was go around the block here, so to speak, and highlight those particular chunks of property and show you a couple of the infrastructure improvements in the area, what exists in terms of mobility and options for the pedestrian, transit, vehicles, parking, and then also how the properties could or might be developed, and then how that would line up with the MX-1 zoning. So starting here with 222 and 224 Highland, that is the little Victorian house here, the vacant lot next door, I believe, is 222, and then the small-scale commercial building that's on the same lot as 224 is 803 West Watauga. So we'll start off by, the request is obviously to take both lots to MX-1, and want to start off by showing that West Watauga does have the purple transit line that runs through here, so there is transit immediately out front. The green indicates where Public Works has come through and extended the wide multi-use trail that comes from Founder's Park. You'll note here that Highland Avenue was also reconstructed as part of the multi-use trail, and so there is on-street parking on the other side. Do want to note, and Ms. Brown brought this up, that Watauga Avenue is a collector and carries roughly 3,300 vehicles per day, I'm sorry, the average annual daily trips. Now, one of the things I did was I reached out to Anthony Todd, the city's transportation and traffic engineer, asked Anthony, I said, 3,300 AADT may not mean anything to folks. Some may say that's low, some may say that's astronomical. What does that mean, Anthony? And he said, well, really, the linkage or the road itself is not where you focus. Where you focus is on the intersections. If the intersections themselves begin to jam up, that's when you have problems. So for example, down at the intersection of Watauga and State of Franklin, or on the other side at Main Street, if those begin to fail, then we know we have a problem. He said in general, on the linkages in between, 3,300 is about a quarter of the overall capacity of what a collector could sustain. And so that was interesting to get that kind of feedback, to help kind of define what does 3,300 ADT mean on a collector road.
Mr. Mitchell, before you move on to that, are you getting ready to leave that one? I have a question.
No, ma'am, I'm still on it.
Okay, go ahead and finish, then I'll ask.
Okay. And so then what I wanted to highlight here was ingress and egress to the site and areas around. One of the things that she had asked about was alleys, and so there is an open public alley that runs behind the site up here, runs all the way through the entire block, actually from Watauga over to Whitney. And then you'll see there would be either are currently or could be three points of ingress into the site. So you have very good movement in and around the site, not only vehicular but also pedestrian and supported by transit. So on the right-hand side, you'll see over here where parking could be provided for both of these buildings if these buildings were adaptively reused, as Ms. Hodges made reference to in her presentation. That's basically taking what was once a single-family home, and if this was zoned MX-1, somebody could turn this into a bakery or turn it into a coffee shop. And so where would they park that? Well, they would park it in this blue area here. Then potentially you could even have a new structure on 222, and parking would be located here off of the alley. Even if the two lots were combined, this would be more area for parking for both of these buildings. But bottom line, all of the parking should be able to be contained completely on those two pieces of property. So now moving on to the next section. Did you have a question here?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
I do. Basically, there are kind of three lots there, is that correct?
Two lots.
Two lots.
But two structures on one lot and then an empty lot.
Correct. So there are, let me go back and get rid of the parking. See, there are two structures here on this corner lot, and then this lot is vacant.
But the size of that, because it's owned by the same owner...
Right.
They could go in there and tear down both of those structures and build some larger business.
Well, they could only, if it was going to be non-residential, it could be no larger than 2,000 square feet.
So about the size of the existing square box?
Actually smaller than the house.
But they could convert those two buildings plus add a third one on the blank, on the vacant lot.
Right, which is what I showed you here. Correct.
Right. So that particular corner right there, which is heavy residential around it, could become quite a little hub for business.
It could be small-scale mixed use, yes. May not be strictly business, could have residential included in with it, but it could be. But again, scale is important, and so keep in mind that the ordinance doesn't allow more than 2,000 square feet for non-residential.
And that could be a lawyer's office or chiropractor's office.
Doctor's office. Correct.
Commissioners, if you're in agreement, I would love to pull this one out to vote separately outside of the whole package, because I'm going to vote against that, and that's fine, but I just, if we vote just on the whole package bundled together, it won't allow me to do that. Now, there are others that I want to vote on, so.
So you'd like to make a motion to pull that one section to make it down to nine parcels instead of 10?
Right.
Final fact, do we need to second that?
So for a point of clarification, Commissioner, Commission, if you pull this parcel out, then you cannot go back and vote just on this parcel independently. If you pull this out, this ordinance will be amended, and you will then vote on approving the ordinance as it's presented to you with the amendment of deleting this lot. So you've either got to vote on it like it is, up or down, or you can amend this ordinance to delete this particular property and then vote on the balance of the properties as to whether or not to pass them on third reading. If you were to change zoning on this particular property, you would have to start a complete new ordinance process through the planning commission.
Right. I had a call from the person who got pulled from this one that we had included last time, and they wanted to be included. So what happened with that?
So I, and I too spoke to that gentleman here on this lot right here. Because there is interest in the, what I call the little island of properties here bound by Whitney, Lamont, and Commerce, there is interest that was previously unknown to us, there is interest now. We wanted to meet with them separately, and so what I had done was, based on the concerns that Commissioner Brock had expressed about this property, pulled his and will include his in any future conversation with those other properties across the street.
Could we go back and include this one we're pulling tonight with those people, or is that going to mess everything up later?
You could do that. There's just three steps that we need to do in order to modify...
So we'd have to start all over, but we're going to start all over for the whole group of them if we're doing it anyway.
What, so the property currently in question, though, the property owner, are they requesting it, or was it city-initiated, or?
The one that we're talking, forgive me, let me go back. This one?
Correct.
Yes, they specifically asked to be a part of it.
Okay. And what was the recommendation from planning commission on this property? You may not recall.
No, it was in favor.
Okay.
Do you remember the vote on that?
The overall vote was 6-1, I believe. It should be in your packet, but yes, I believe it was 6-1.
I also received a call from him. I think his interest, the one on Whitney and Lamont, was he wanted to separate his properties. Both houses are on one property, and MX-1 would allow him to do that. So I don't think it was as much wanting to sell it for a business than to sell it for residential. And you've got homes right across the street that if you sit on your porch, you're looking into a brewery. That, I just have real problems with that. But, you know, I'm one vote, and I can state that, so. If y'all want to leave that in, that's fine. I'll just make my vote for the whole thing.
You got a second from John already.
Well, I was asking.
And I didn't realize the whole thing would go dormant at that point.
Yeah, no, with that point of clarification, I'd prefer to keep it all together personally. Again, we're all one vote.
Do you want to make a motion with that, then?
Were there any other questions, or?
He's going through all the...
Oh, yeah, you've got more to go through.
Well, I don't need to go through the rest. I was really doing it for the benefit of you all, but also to respond to Ms. Brown's concerns. I can go through this part right here quickly.
Well, were there any other concerns that you needed to address on her points?
Mainly just on this last piece right here and the... Mainly just on this last piece right here, and we've kind of already addressed it, but how could the Michael Manzi pieces be developed? How would that accommodate, or how would parking and other development standards be accommodated? So I was showing here where there's parking that's been provided in the area, green or multi-use trails, transit still in the area, and then access points, the alley comes out from over there on the other piece we're talking about, punches out here to Whitney. There is open right-of-way right there, so that's another issue, that's something we need to work out with Public Works. But then if the Manzi piece was to develop in a, something like that, that's a 2,000-square-foot footprint right there on the corner, let's say that was a coffee shop plus two apartments above it, that would generate 18 parking spaces, he could provide those here in this blue area. Some of those could be provided down here in the Founder's Park parking lot, but bottom line, there's plenty of area to provide parking. So some of the concerns that were raised about parking and congestion and access and alleys, and what I just wanted to do here was, on not only this side of the block, but the other side of the block, was reiterate that you really have multimodal situation set up here with very nice pedestrian amenities, transit in the area, parking facilities that have been provided both off-site and on-street, and then properties that are scaled in a way that parking could still be provided on-site.
Got one more question.
Sure.
Do you still have the map of, like, the whole neighborhood that shows the zoning, like, back in the '70s, or whatever it was upzoned as far as residential?
R2.
Industrial, there's industrial.
Sure, well, no, I could, I could, I could, I could un-
Yeah, that one.
Unhide that one and then go back.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. That's why I keep them in the slide deck.
So I remember the neighborhood, the residential part, was zoned for high-density residential at one point in time, and then it was brought down to a single-family designation, you know what I'm saying?
Correct, so if we go back to the, yeah, to the little cartoon map.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the entire area, and then it started as R3.
Okay.
Which is, which is not single-family, but it's very low-density multifamily, essentially kind of duplexes, triplexes, things like that. 1972, they upzoned it to R4, R5, hoping to get infill development in there, but what happened was, it backfired a little bit. They began to carve up the homes into apartments, some of the multifamily that was built was incompatible with the neighborhood, and so then, you may recall, in 2005, that entire thing was brought all the way back down again to R2C to help protect it.
And I know it would be hard to come up with an accurate estimate, but if we hadn't rezoned it down to R2C, what would have been the potential increase in traffic if it had continued down that route of dividing houses into multifamily and creating more multifamily units in that large neighborhood?
No, that's an excellent question, because it goes back and speaks to the information I got from Anthony Todd. West Watauga is the collector, and that's this road right here, and so a collector does just that. It collects all of the traffic coming off of these side or these local streets, and then takes them to larger arterial roads. As we heard from Mr. Todd, we're roughly at about 3,000, 3,300 annual average daily trips, and he said that's a quarter, really, essentially, there's a number of factors involved, but essentially that's a quarter of what West Watauga could sustain.
So full capacity would be 14,000 cars going up and down that way, if it's a fourth, at 3,300?
Correct. Well, but again, he said that there are a number of factors that impact that, number of driveways, the cross streets, but yes, ultimately, a collector street that is failing, so to speak, would be roughly around those numbers. And so we know there's capacity on West Watauga. So if that development had proceeded in that way, there's capacity to cover, to carry those vehicles. And then the other is, because Mountain Home was built in a traditional style, meaning it's a gridded street network with multiple streets and alleys, there are multiple dispersion points. You know, you'll see in a lot of modern subdivisions, just a single spine road maybe going in and out, and the cul-de-sacs coming off of that. What they did back then was try to disperse all the traffic in multiple directions. So it could have sustained it, it just was not, the way it was happening was not being supported by the neighborhood.
And so, I mean, I guess the reason why I bring that up is the risk of heavy traffic would have been much higher, if not for the downzoning to R2C with increased, I can't remember the word y'all used, of repurposing properties.
Adaptive reuse.
Adaptive reuse from single-family houses to four-unit efficiency apartments and whatnot, which we see a lot in this area and we've seen in the tree streets, which creates not just traffic issues, but parking issues on properties and on streets, and I could see that having created a much larger issue than possibly these two parcels, personally, being zoned to MX-1 from R4.
And Preston, what was Mr. Manzi's before wanting to go to MX-1? What was his zone? Do you remember? It was close to the industrial, but it wasn't, was it?
Right, I can go right over there. It is, I believe it was also heavy industrial.
Is that the lot we sold?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, these two are heavy industrial right now. So actually, everything in here, from the very top all the way down here through the parking lot, is all heavy industrial right now.
Part of it, when he bought that lot, it was industrial, and he knew that it was going to have to be changed.
He did.
And it wasn't guaranteed anything when he bought that lot. We didn't guarantee anything to him when he bought that lot.
No, because there's no zoning associated with the land conveyance.
But we don't need that to be industrial, no matter what.
No, absolutely not. Not with the investment you all have made out there. And not only that, but the land is too small, it wouldn't suit heavy industrial.
We need to change it one way or the other.
Correct.
And the two houses right there on Whitney, on the left side, right there in the corner, those are the two that came off.
Mr. Blevins.
But did he indicate he wanted them back on?
He did. He called me after that meeting and said, you know, "How come those came off?" And I said, "Because we now have expressed interest from folks in this area who never wanted to be removed from the original 20." And they said, you know, they said, "Our silence," meaning we weren't opposing it, should have sent the message that we were in favor." And I said, "Well, because there was concern from the City Commission, we wanted to pull all those where we didn't have direct interest."
We can put it back again.
We can, we just want to have that conversation with them.
Later.
Right.
So I've struggled with this.
Sure, sure.
You know that.
Yes, ma'am.
And a big part of it is because it started off as this really big bundled package with 20 different properties, as if it were kind of being master-planned, but a lot of these properties are because the residents found out about it, and they wanted to get their property on, so maybe they could either convert it to a business or sell it, somebody else could convert a business there. For me personally, to the extent that we're even talking about now, it's going to change a lot of the neighborhood. And, you know, the one there on Watauga, it is really nestled in with houses across the street from it and beside it, and so I, my request is, any future projects like this, let's list everything individually, so we can, you know, prod it, poke it, and make a decision that's, that doesn't kind of restrict, you know, concerns about some of the different things that's going on. That's my request.
Sure, there.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have a motion from?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
All right, do we have a second? We don't have a second? I can second it, I will second it. Any further discussion? Ms. Jennings, can you call the roll?
Commissioner Brock?
I'm going to go back to what my concerns were initially. This is a residential area, and I feel protecting the residential area for these citizens is what I really need to do, and I'm going to vote no.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
No.
Vice Mayor Fowler?
Yes, but two doesn't do it, so we're just going to fail tonight, then.
Well, actually, just your motion fails, so still need to have a motion. Just the motion failed. Still need to make a decision as to whether or not it's, you're going to, it needs to be denied or approved.
Failed to get approved.
Well, and I would just restate, you know, if this was at that higher residential zoning, it would be residential, but it would deteriorate the neighborhood much more so, one, in traffic, and then two, in the nature of what the neighborhood was built for in the first place. These properties, in my personal experience, having lived in older neighborhoods like this in other areas, having small pieces of mixed use incorporated on the edges and of neighborhoods like this actually promotes a neighborhood and its desirability and walkability to things that you can do within or close to your residence. These aren't high-impact.
There's some of these I would vote for. I mean, the ones close to Founder's Park, and that makes sense.
So do we need another motion to exclude the one on Watauga?
I'm, you probably need some guidance on that. It failed to pass, so I think it just failed to pass on third reading. You don't, you can't go back and-
Well, the motion failed, but there still needs to be a decision.
That was the decision.
That was the decision, yeah. Unless they bring, unless, it's a 2-2 vote, it didn't move forward.
We need a majority.
There's some way we can figure out to-
Right, so if you wanted to remove that parcel, I spoke to the city attorney right before the commission, because I was just, this was just brought to my attention five minutes before the meeting. You could move to do what's called a comprehensive amendment, and you have to use that word, comprehensive amendment, to remove those addresses. And if you did that, then Mr. Stahl would need to reread the caption with those addresses removed, and then you would vote.
Sandos, would you like to say something?
That would have been done before they voted on.
Right.
Which was, that was the third reading of consideration. It would have been before-
This would have to go back to a first reading, would it not?
Correct. If it died today.
Died today on third reading.
Is that extensive amendments required to get back?
Like if it's a real extensive amendment?
What had been contemplated that was potential, then would have been, it would not have been a material or substantial revision.
Okay.
What could have been contemplated would have been pulling out a piece which wouldn't have changed the fundamental interest of what was being considered. Had that been done before the vote, it could have proceeded on third reading, but since they voted on what was before them without any amendments.
Ms. Sandos, can I change my vote? As, and we've done this in the past, any commissioner who's voted, and then defer it to the next reading as if we can't get this worked out?
Ms. Jennings, are you aware of?
Not once it's called.
My understanding, my understanding of Robert's Rules of Order is that the vote is concluded at this point.
Well, we can always suspend that, right? The rules?
I'm not going to do it tonight. We'll just have to come back and start over again, I guess, because it failed on the third reading, so.
Definitely didn't pass, that's for sure.
Anything further before we go on?
Okay. Mayor, that would take us to 9.2, ordinance number 4774-2121 on third reading, and ordinance to rezone vacant land on South Roan Street from B4 Plan Business to R5 High Density Residential.
There has been no new information, but I am available for questions.
Move approval? We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Either one you would like to choose there, I guess, Ms. Jennings.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
It passed.
Which brings us to ordinance number 4775-21 on third reading, and ordinance to rezone portions of the Chestnut Cove subdivision along Highland Church Road and Haretown Road from R2B to R2C and RP2.
I have, there is no new information, but I am available for questions.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Jennings, read it.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Thank you.
That brings us to other, we have item 10.1, Concept Plan Amendment, Stone Gables Subdivision, consider approval of an amendment to the 2011 Stone Gables Plan Unit Development, otherwise known as a PUD, Concept Plan for Driveway Connections.
I will go get Mr. Mitchell, but I can answer some questions.
We've looked at it several times.
I can ask if anything else has come in. It doesn't look like it for-
It has the Planning Commission.
It's just really turning that one driveway.
This was about the driveways.
Yeah, just that one driveway turning it sideways.
And anything new for the concept plan for Stone Gables?
No, not that was presented to you last time, but I'm happy to provide any additional information. At the time, the mayor had wanted to speak to Dr. Cooper, I believe Dr. Cooper had called him, and he had not had an opportunity to speak to him prior to the meeting, and so I believe that was what led to his desire to-
Have this come back again?
Defer the item, right. But there's been no change. The request is still the same, that is, to amend the concept plan simply for the purpose of driveways, but the rights under the 2011 action to do the development under the zoning that is there now, that's not on the table and has not changed.
All right, so we just need a motion to accept this, is that right, Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Okay.
Please for approval.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Jennings, can you call the roll?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
I will just have public input. I will open public input. Anyone wishing to come forward? David, chief, anyone? All right, I will close public input. Anything further, Mr. Stahl?
I have nothing further to report.
Commissioner Hunter?
Nope.
Anything? Commissioner Brock?
Happy Fourth.
Happy Fourth. Everybody be careful.
We don't really have a lot of activities going on here in Johnson City, but our neighboring towns do. Hope everyone stays safe.
Very good. Commissioner Murphy?
That is good.
That's good. All right, well, seeing nothing else, I will close this meeting.
Good job.